I'd like to call to order a work session on May 21st. It is now 5:00 PM. Councilor Laura Tanna will not be here. We only have one item on the work session. I would like council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. So at 3:01, staff will provide the city council with an overview of the Water Conservation Committee and staff recommendations and seek council's input and direction. Our presenter here is our Water Resource Manager, Mark Holmes. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Your Water Conservation Committee and staff are excited to be here this evening to present and discuss the proposed water conservation recommendations.
We're excited to.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Mario Columbia, Chairman of the Water Conservation Committee, to my right. And he will be co-presenting, and also in attendance are some of the members of the Water Conservation Committee in the audience. The genesis for the Water Conservation Committee began with a recommendation from the Water Planning Committee report that was adopted in June of 2015. And I quote, "The Water Planning Committee voted to recommend directing staff to consider implementation of another water citizen group to continue the efforts made by the Water Planning Committee on the issues of sustainability and conservation." Wow, what is that? That's... Wow. Thank you. So while the Water Planning Committee was completing its work, the Integrated Water Master Plan was looking at the city's water future needs. So this is a chart taken from the adopted 2016 Integrated Water Master Plan Executive Summary. You probably remember that from the Integrated Water Master Plan Review. The Integrated Water Master Plan identified the city's current total renewable water supplies at slightly more than 21,000 acre-feet, shown in the left pie chart. Each pie slice represents a different flavor of the renewable water supplies within the city's portfolio. The Integrated Water Master Plan calculated the build-out water demands for the city at slightly more than 135,000 acre-feet, as shown by the right pie chart. The Integrated Water Master Plan proposed a slightly more than 35,000 acre-foot need for additional water conservation, and that's indicated by the orange pie slice within the right pie chart, and by build-out, which is predicted around the year 2085. If the conservation efforts are successful, then an additional 40,500 acre-feet of new water supplies will be needed for build-out of the city. In February of 2016, the city council created a Water Conservation Committee through a resolution, and in June of 2016, council appointed 11 members and two alternates to the new committee. Members were selected by the council board's commissions and committee appointment subcommittee. And with that, I'll turn over to Mario Columbia to discuss the committee and its efforts.
Hey, Lord, members of the council. My name is Mario Columbia. And again, it's a great honor and privilege to participate and present to you water conservation topics as the chairman of the Water Conservation Committee. The Water Conservation Committee is a strong committee that is composed of diverse stakeholders that represent homeowners, associations, real estate, developers, builders, landscapers, representatives from the landscaping industry, residential and non-residential landowners. The committee was intentionally designed to be inclusive of all water provider areas within the city. However, the majority of the members reside within the city's water service area. The purpose of the Water Conservation Committee outlined in the bylaws included, one, understand regulatory requirements and the city's water usage patterns and the outdoor water conservation potential based on the city's latest water conservation plan; two, review impacts of proposed future water conservation initiatives on stakeholders and ensure the initiative's success; three, prioritize recommendations and determine costs on return on investment as data permitted; and four, recommend a prioritized set of conservation actions that could include changes to existing guidelines, ordinances, programs, and further studies needed as part of the five-year plan before July 2018. The Water Conservation Committee met for a total of 19 times since July of 2016. During the first year, the committee discussed water usage, water supplies, and conservation activities. The committee also toured several city utility facilities and received direct information of the scale of capital and operations needed to manage and serve water to the community. The committee also received presentations from the Development Services, Engineering, and Parks Departments regarding water management. The committee also received a presentation by one of the largest HOAs in the city. We also had several discussions about climate change and drought impacts regarding our state, and had the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association present to the committee regarding what conservation programs others were working on throughout Arizona and other states. Several schools from the Arizona State University presented to the committee to include the School of Sustainability, the Decision Center for Desert City, and the School of Future Innovation for Sustainability. Presentations included topics such as, one, advanced technologies and how they could assist water customers in managing their outdoor water usage; two, mitigate strategies for the urban heat-island effect and citywide tree planting; and of course, three, water conservation strategies. The committee and staff then started developing concepts and ideas for the discussion. The Water Conservation Committee and staff discussed several topics and were further aggregated into 12 final proposed recommendations. The proposed recommendations were prioritized based on a general scale of low, medium, and high value for labor, costs, and water savings. Before turning this over to Mark, it's becoming progressively more apparent to me that if we want water conservation to matter, to spread, and to last, then the structures in which our leaders do their work must make water conservation a priority. Therefore, we all need to remain focused as we move forward in accepting this water conservation transformation, with the understanding that this required transformation doesn't happen overnight, as it requires intention, practice, and requires one thought. Let's be water smart, not water short. So with that said, I will turn this back over to Mark to discuss the 12 proposed recommendations.
Thanks, Mario. So this is a table showing the 12 final recommendations in priority order with predicted, again, general labor, costs, and water savings for each recommendation. Each recommendation will be further analyzed at the time of being proposed to show actual labor, costs, water savings, cost savings, and return on investment and/or net present value calculations, based on the details of the recommendation program or project at that time. The recommendation will then be proposed through the annual budget process or to council for further action. And now I'll go ahead and go into each one of the recommendations in further detail. Recommendation number one, this is to develop a new landscape design standards. The goal of the recommendation is to create an outdoor landscape design committee with appropriate stakeholders to develop new landscape design plans that would reduce the outdoor water usage to the greatest extent possible. Determine an aim for a citywide outdoor water reduction of 50% of the residential outdoor landscapes from adoption to build-out of the city while adhering to all the city's master plans. Recommendation has seven sub-points. Number one, the new committee will review the city's comprehensive master plans, again, to ensure the core values of the city are maintained. Number two, while the city currently meets the Phoenix Active Management Area Conservation requirements, proposed committee will evaluate new potential accepted plants, trees, shrubs, and grasses that can use 15% to 25% less water. Number three, develop new low-water-use landscape styles. Number four, the committee will review existing city codes to ensure maximum water conservation. Number five, the committee will review existing street design standards and make recommendations that would include, A, develop recommendations to modify street designs that can passively capture and utilize more rainwater for landscape watering; B, determine costs and benefits, return on investment, and net present value analysis; and C, identify funding sources and impacts to budgets. Number six, the committee will coordinate efforts with the citywide tree plan, of which I will cover shortly; and seven, the new committee will be co-managed, could be co-managed, by Development Services, Engineering, and Public Works Departments. If this recommendation was successful, it alone has the potential of meeting the integrated water master plans recommended 35,000 acre-foot reduction in conservation. It should be noted that the Development Services has already embarked on this effort to revise the landscape design standards, of which this recommendation could be incorporated into their efforts. Recommendation number two, evaluate a conservation rate structure. The goal is determine if conservation pricing would have a positive effect for increasing efficiency and conservation; and secondly, ensure that any conservation pricing is fair and equitable. There are three sub-points to the recommendation. Explore water rate structures that would promote increased efficiencies and conservation. Number two, examine seasonal rates, new rate tiers, and rate stabilization; and three, determine cost savings to customers with conservation as opposed to what rates would be without conservation or status quo. As a side note, you may have heard water customers express they're paying more for less. It is true that water rates continue to increase every year, but the cost of water conservation and increasing efficiencies within a water utility will help keep the water rate increases as low as possible. Using less water keeps capital costs down over time. By stretching the lifespan of sources, supply sources, water utilities can avoid or delay the cost of securing new supplies, building and maintaining new infrastructure, and treating more water and wastewater. By tracking and analyzing efficiencies through water conservation is possible to show how much more water consumers are saving with water conservation. The Finance Department is, will be looking at evaluating a new five-year rate plan in the very near future, and this recommendation could be incorporated into that effort. Recommendation number three is to develop a citywide tree plan. The goal has two parts. Provide an optimal tree shade and artificial shade coverage plan that would use tree species that require little or no supplemental watering once established. And number two, provide urban heat-island buffering for the city. The recommendation has three sub-points. Number one, evaluate the amount of shade and reduced turf that would not be planted in tree shade zones or provide shade for other landscapes and reduce watering needs. Number two, determine an aim to reduce the overall outdoor landscape water budget by 15%. Number three, ensure the timing of the citywide tree plan with the Landscape Design Committee. Efforts to ensure these two plans are seamlessly brought together and blended. As a side note, according to the Arizona State University research with the Phoenix Metropolitan Area, there are 290 gallons per month per household water use increase for every 1 degree Fahrenheit increase of average nighttime temperature. So you can imagine buffering urban heat-island will save a lot of water.
That's startling.
Recommendation number four, develop advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI, citywide. There are three subset, three sub-points to the goal. Number one, expand the advanced metering infrastructure AMI system citywide. Number two, require all new meters for new water service be AMI-compatible. Well, the good news is Utilities is already installing AMI-compatible meters in all new water accounts, so we're meeting that objective. Goal number three, establish a customer portal that empowers customers to better understand and manage their water use. Builds through technology that increases customer satisfaction, lowers costs of service, and builds for long-term system improvements. And there's five sub-points to the recommendation. Number one, determine what is needed. Infrastructure, funding, integration, and software for full system implementation. Number two, determine the real water savings. Number three, determine appropriate customer and utility software requirements. Number four, determine overall expenses, benefits, and return on investment. And five, determine if a partnership can be established with Liberty Utilities and Epcore Water for the integration of their customers' real-time water use station data that can be incorporated into our AMI portal. Recommendation number five, expand community education. The goal is to establish water conservation education programs that promote awareness and provide specific strategies for outdoor efficiencies. And there are eight sub-points to the recommendation. Number one, target efforts for the highest water volume-using customers. Number two, evaluate optimal media outlets and messaging content. Number three, record and then distribute outdoor water-saving techniques via the city website or YouTube videos. For example, demonstrating the home irrigation checkups, irrigation controller use, irrigation systems, leak detection, and proper pool draining. All videos should be formatted for mobile device usage. Number four, market and broadcast city phone numbers for water waste reporting. Promote the use, number five, promote the use of Public Stuff App. Number six, promote partnerships with entities that use large amounts of water outdoors, such as schools, HOAs, et cetera. Number seven, annually review the adopted city plumbing codes and city design standards and guidelines to ensure the promotion of water efficiencies. And number eight, highlight and promote success stories through the city that would provide interest for others to replicate. These success stories would, in essence, become the demonstration projects for the various types of water users throughout the city. Recommendation number six, develop new landscape incentives. The goal is to create a fair and equitable landscape incentive program that encourages residents, HOAs, and commercial properties to convert high-water-use landscapes to low-water-use landscapes, or zirscapes, that use the most efficient landscape watering technologies. There are five sub-points to the recommendation. Number one, develop a turf conversion incentive program. Number two, develop a smart irrigation controller incentive program that produced with products or devices based on the pilot project efforts, which I will outline shortly. Number three, determine what is needed for development and implementation. Number four, determine real water savings. And number five, determine overall expenses, benefits, and return on investments. Recommendation number seven is develop a pool committee. The goal is create an outdoor pool committee that would develop a plan that would implement and increase efficiency in citywide water usage to the greatest extent possible over a 10-year period. Determine an aim for a citywide outdoor aggregated pool water efficiency increase of 50% from adoption to build-out of the city. Note, this goal is not suggesting a reduction in the number of pools, but increasing the efficiency of water used in outdoor pools. Recommendation, the Water Conservation Committee felt that not all of the right stakeholders were at the table, and recommend to establish a special outdoor pool usage committee with stakeholders that are comprised of pool builders, home builders, development community, homeowners' association, pool suppliers, residents of mixed age groups, Goodyear Parks and Recreation Department, landscape architects, and the Economic Development Department. Recommendation number eight, develop new customer-friendly services. The goal is to provide a more personalized approach to assist customers in the sustainable use of water and access to water conservation programs. Recommendation has five sub-parts. Number one, determine what is needed for the program, funding time, demands, permissions, data collection, logistics, the equipment, training, and staffing needs. Number two, determine the realized benefits and savings. Number three, increase customer access to one-on-one services to personally assist with sustainable water use. Tasks may include, A, home leak detection information; B, preparation of individual home water budget based on lot size, house size, and number of people living in the home; C, provide tips, list of low-water-use landscape plants, list of water sense fixtures, appliances, and how to remove turf; D, assist with rebate programs if or when adopted, applications, processing, and filling out forms; E, answering specific residential conservation questions; and F, outreach to high-water users. Number four, customers may grant permission in writing to the city allowing public work staff to turn off customer water service in the event of a leak before notification. Current procedure is that staff must get permission from the customer prior to shut off. And lastly, provide either as a bill insert or separate mail or email showing customers' water usage compared to others in the subdivision or building size similar to your electric utility usage. Recommendation number nine, water main flushing program. The goal is to explore new technologies that conserve and recycle water and enhance water quality within the distribution system as part of a system-wide water main flushing program. There's four sub-parts to the recommendation. As a side note, currently when water is flushed from a water main, it is discharged to the ground as a industry best practice. So number one, determine what is needed. Funding, contracts, et cetera, for inline mobile filtration system, systems that could recirculate the water back to the water main. Number two, determine real water savings. And number three, determine overall expenses, benefits, and return on investment. And four, determine the non-revenue water losses and develop financial systems for charging entities that currently fall outside the current customer parameters when performing hydrant testing, dust control of streets, or other uses. Recommendation number 10, develop a smart controller pilot project. The goal is to determine the average percentage of water savings realized by homes using smart irrigation controller technology within the city of Goodyear. And there's four sub-points to the recommendation. Number one, establish a pilot program of 100 smart irrigation controllers. Number two, determine the logistics of how the data will be collected and analyzed, and through private property permissions and data acquisition. Number three, analyze real water savings from the pilot and calculate future benefits if the pilot was expanded. And lastly, determine the return on investment if an incentive program was established in the future. Recommendation number 11, expand the home irrigation checkups. The goal is determine if an effective strategy to implement and expand the home irrigation checkup program to the greatest number of customers. And there's three sub-points to the recommendations. Number one, reestablish the home irrigation checkup program with initial focus on the highest 1% water-using residential accounts, and then focus on the top 10%, 20%, and then next highest water-using customers, and so on. Number two, determine needs for the program. Funding, time demands, permissions, data collection, logistics, equipment, training, and staffing needs. And lastly, determine the realized benefits in water savings. And recommendation number 12, develop water-intensive exceptions. The goal, the Water Conservation Committee felt that the city should not conserve at all costs, but have exceptions to certain water-intensive activities where the greater good of the city is considered and may have value that exceeds the water resources, the water efficiencies, and conservation values. The recommendation is, through a city leadership and interdepartmental process, discuss, develop, and evaluate a best management approach or policy that would provide exceptions for water-intensive activities choosing to locate within Goodyear, or creating water-intensive In order to ensure the plan's success, the Public Works Department recommends it take ownership of the plan to propose and coordinate the activities for each recommendation. And at this time, we look forward to hearing your comments and direction on the recommendations that will be incorporated into current activities and future city projects, policies, and guidelines. Staff also requests that council provide staff direction on how you would like to be periodically updated on the implementation of these recommendations. We'd be happy to address any questions you may have or discuss, any recommendations in further detail, and receive further direction from you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mario. I just realized, they're the new M&amp;Ms. And we welcome this information. So I'm going to let Coulson start. Let's see, who wants to start first?
I have four pages, so I can...
Well, you're not going to start first. And I'm going to say that if you have four pages, you can't give all your questions, because we want this interactive. So if you just spill out all yours, then none of us else can weigh in.
That's what I'm reading.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm just, you know, I'm just putting the rules out on the table tonight, okay? All right, so, Joe, go ahead.
I don't have four pages. Listen, I want to thank you and the committee for being so thorough with this recommendation. To me, a gallon saved is a dollar. We don't have to, I mean, a gallon saves a gallon we don't have to produce. And it's a very thorough plan, and I want to thank you guys, put a lot of effort into it. From my perspective, what you have, to me, to make it really successful, and I agree that Public Works has to take it, but the marketing plan that gets the buy-in from the general public, so they understand the importance of why this program is needed, why it's important for us to focus on conservation. If you get the buy-in from the public on top of implementing these plans, I think you're going to have a major success. So I think from a marketing standpoint, that also has to be a top priority in getting that message out there. Quick question, though, on leakage through mains, water mains, and that type of stuff. Is that something that's easy, difficult to determine, to try to, you know, some of that you lose through leakage through the transmission system? Is that something that's, and again, I'm not that familiar with the mechanics of it, but is that something that's manageable?
Yes, we are currently required every year on our annual reports to the state Department of Water Resources, how much leakage has occurred, so we have to account for that. From the point of the meter at the well site where the water is produced, to the point of delivery to the customer, we account for that. And there's additional leak detection equipment that could be further analyzed where leaks are occurring to try and, and our operation teams do use that technology to try and repair and go out and identify leaks.
Is that significant? Leakage?
The state mandates that every, a water provider be less than 10%. We are less than 10%. I don't recall the exact, I think we're somewhere between 6% and 7% if I can get the specific number.
No, that's fine, but we are under the mandate on there. And again, I want to truly thank you and the committee. It's very thorough, really well-thought-out, and looking forward to updates. Thank you.
Any of you have any questions, sort of what his question was? I mean, anything attached to that? All right, let's go on to the next one. Bill?
Yeah, my questions are different.
Well, that's it, but I mean, if it is different, and one of you council people can weigh in on that, let's do it at this time, okay? Go ahead, Bill.
Perfect. Again, to reiterate what Joe said, thank you very much. I know there's a number of the committee members sitting out there, but this was a big effort, so appreciate that. I did, your recommendation number one, which I think is a citizen committee, is that correct? Is that what I took away from that?
Yes, that was a committee of various stakeholders to develop new landscape design standards.
Maybe I'm getting hung up on the terminology, because it would seem to me that staff, developer, builder, committee might be better served in that capacity. Is that the kind of stakeholders that you're referring to? Are you talking about ratepayers and the quote-unquote average citizen?
I want to add to what he's saying, and so would we have people, because as we were looking through this, I kept thinking about technology and how it comes out. And as a resident, we just don't, we have conversation about a leak, but we don't have anything that says, okay, what can you do, and what's the newest tech? So that goes along with that. Anybody else in that part? Bill, go ahead.
So the committee actually, in this recommendation, had established who those stakeholders would be. Would you like to hear them? Okay, so landscape architects, home builders, land developers, trade association, Arizona Landscape Contractors Association, Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, water conservation manager, homeowners association, local residents, and the city departments that would include Development Services, Parks and Recreation, Engineering, Economic Development, Water Resources, and those that would be part of the city's, if we have landscape architect on staff or thereabouts, that type of position, to develop a recommendation plan.
Okay, perfect. I obviously overlooked that part, because I think one of the things that we benefit from is industry expertise. And the other thing that we are hurt by is the size of a committee. A committee of 30 or 40 people gets to be too much to try to get anything actually accomplished, so it sounds like you're headed in the right direction. And the other question that I had was, there seems to be a conflict between the concept of turf conversion and urban heating. We know turf keeps everything cooler, but if we want to get rid of the turf, then we're going to increase the urban heating piece. So I was, it seemed through the presentation that there were, I don't want to say a conflict, but there's kind of a mental conflict between those two. So can you talk a little bit about, you know, if we get rid of the grass, how is that going to affect the urban heating? And if we put more grass in, aren't we really going to reduce the urban heating and vice-versa? So...
That's a great question, customer stip. The goal is, there's two things happening at once. You're absolutely correct. We have an incentive to try and reduce grass to some efficient level of grass, but at the same time, the citywide tree plan...
the same time, the citywide tree plan has a goal to look at how much of the city's percent of its, its space would be covered with shade bearing provided by trees. So if, let's say, for example, that's 20% or some percent can be achieved by trees versus turf, there's a lot less water going for that type of heat buffering, low-water-use landscape of those tree materials that are more, I'll say, trees that are drought-tolerant, low-water use. But those two, the, the landscape design, turf reduction, and a tree plan, they all have to marry together, and your point is, is well taken. They have to marry very well, so we're actually buffering the urban heat island and not increasing it by the reduction of turf in some areas that might be replaced with trees that provide shade to then mitigate what the turf has been removed.
All right, Joanne, why don't you start asking some of your questions?
Okay, well.
I'm gonna let you ask them all, but you're gonna do it on a sequence.
Well, thank you. I, I, you know what, I really, I really appreciated everything that you all have done. And this is obviously extremely timely right now, too, for our state. And so, as we grow and go into the future, you guys are right on in the, in the ideas that you are coming up with. So, you know, just for even the citizens that are listening, some of the things that, you know, came out in this report, I, I think are worth repeating. And, and one of them is that 60% annually produced of our water is outdoors. And I think that's really critical of, of understanding for everybody. But, you know, the fact that you said if we can increase water efficiency by 1% a year until built out, that is a great goal to, to try to come to, and, and I really like that. To start, some of the, I guess, the questions that I had, as I was looking at this, and there was statements of the 2008 plan, I guess, kind of coincide in there. And so, some of the things, I, I wondered, have we done all of those things that were in that 2008 plan? Because I wasn't sure.
So, within the, the draft plan that you reviewed in your packet, the updates are actually highlighted with the red text on the right. If it was completed, it was indicated by as completed or updated, and then what the, what the remedy was to accomplish that activity, or if it was still ongoing. If you did not see red updates, it means that it has not been accomplished. If it just had the old date that it was predicted to occur in the 2008 Water Conservation Plan, that date is, has not, that plan's not been updated, so that, that date still is, is there.
So there's still some, there's still some work to do. And, and I'm glad that, you know, Public Works will be taking this on, and, and I don't know, Sandra Rodey had been our water conservation person. Is there a new entity just for this? Because this is, this is a lot of work, this entire plan. So I was wondering about that.
Yes, we actually have a water demand advisor. Ray Diaz is our new water demand advisor, and he's been with the city well over 10 years. Ray's here? Right there. So he is managing the demand side. We have a water supply advisor, looking at the production and supply of water. We also have a water demand advisor, looking at the demand side of the equation, which is the use of water and the various users. We do have that.
Right. Well, I noticed that goal one is critical and timely to fire station building right now. That was within your priority three, I believe, within the, so, we had some of those items that I see are so timely right now, and I, I appreciate that. You want to do?
No, I'm just, I'll give you another one. Pass it on.
Okay. Let's see, you already asked that. You know, some of the ideas that I thought, as you go forward with this, and, and citizen input, and how we're gonna show our citizens and our businesses ideas, you know, I think when we're designing right-of-ways and this list of landscape items to use, that's a perfect way of showing in our own right-of-ways and in school right-of-ways, things like that, of saying, if you, if you have this look, not only are you establishing, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, but you're showing other residents of, hey, that looks cool, I can do that in my yard, and it's water-efficient. So, so those are, are great ways to do it. But I think also by having some kind of contest, that you were to say, or even working with landscape companies or greenhouses and saying, you know what, if we were to have some homeowner that said, I'm willing to get rid of my grass, but, you know, I don't have the money to put in this, you know, maybe some kind of contest will get, you know, that, that feeling of wanting to, to do something new.
Just to interject, and that I did do the, in the, in the state of Arizona, we've done that, the city's done that. I don't think ours did, but I've seen it in the, uh, Phoenix area and some other areas have had small programs like that.
Quite a few.
And they were very effective, I understand, so, yeah.
Well, and, and it's, it was showing in there that, that Gilbert has been working on this for two decades.
There's one.
And, and back to, you know, they were able to, to lower it by 5.8% because of their conservation.
Well, I think the new construction is already lowered, because they don't, aren't allowed to put the grass in, the big amounts of grass, isn't that correct? Is that, is that universal, or is that just, I know, we can't Pebble Creek, you have a little place for your dog, and that's about it, so?
Within the active management area, the Phoenix active management, you have to meet conservation requirements, whether, whatever water provider you're in. Obviously, historic homes that were built in certain timeframes may be grandfathered in, or that if they have certain irrigation, like if you're an SRP, might have flood irrigation and so forth. But there are requirements, they must be met, and of course, HOAs may have further requirements if they want to sell a product that's maybe more sustainable or water-efficient to avoid high water bills to their customers, and it might be a different market for that versus some that want to have a lot of requirements for, for turf. It may vary.
So I'll turn to another council. Anything you have, council?
Some general.
Do you want to ask anything now? You just want to be a part of this? Just go ahead.
My turn? Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the committee. I know it was a long, two-year process. I appreciate all the dedication and all the hard work, that was, all the ideas, there are a lot of great ideas that are actionable, that we can actually take and, and use. I appreciate all the hard work. I know I went to at least one of your committee meetings, so that was pretty interesting, too, to see you guys in action. So I thank you so much for the dedication and, and helping us out with our water future, because there was this point, it's, it's very important and crucial for our build-out and our development, and it's something that we, we have to, we have to look at, so, and it's, it's good for us to, to keep growing, so. As I looked at the rollout plan, I thought that was, was good. I don't know if we're, if that's the proposed, or if that's what, you want to move things up, or if that's how we plan on doing that. But, you know, I'm on board with, you know, all the ideas, like the use of the technology, and how you prioritize it, and at least focusing on at least the, the top, the top four right away, and, and moving, and we keep moving forward, so. I think everybody answered a lot of the same questions I had, so I just want to say thank you, so.
Wally?
Well, I just wanted to ask, have you actually, since you're getting into the nitty-gritty and the weeds, so to speak, have you actually done an assessment of how much grass is actually in Goodyear?
We've actually, through, Sandra Rodey before she left, was working with a professor at ASU, using geographic information systems to try and look at citywide total square feet or acres of turf. We do have a lot of information from the developments. I, I don't recall off the top of my head if we have a comprehensive number at this point. I think we have a good, a good idea, an estimate of what exists out there through the work that was done already through with the, or work with team with ASU.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know we don't have the amount of grass that Chandler has, or Phoenix have, and we don't have really flood irrigation out here. So we're a complete different entity, and I appreciate all of this. It's just almost overwhelming to think that one committee thinks they're going to be able to do all of this, and to do it well, because it's going to take an awful lot of cooperation from an awful lot of people. I think it's important that we continue to educate our residents on water conservation, not only just because Goodyear provides the southern end of the city with water, but we need to partner with Liberty, who does a huge bulk of the, of the northern section. And in my bill, every month, there's something about conservation, and there's some number to call. If I think I have a leak, they come out free, and they come out and check my meter, they do all of this, and I'm assuming that my city does the same thing for my city residents. And I think a lot of times, we just need to continue to educate folks on that cer, that thing, on that certain education front. I think doing, changing out the meters would be really good. Do we have to pay for that?
I'm sorry, I was writing down, I'm sorry, I missed your last.
Go ahead.
No, your last statement, I'm sorry.
For the, to change out the meters, does the city pay for the meters? And do we arbitrarily just change the amount of just the southern section, or are you proposing we edict it for all of the city and get Liberty on board? I mean, I don't know how you want this to work, since we have two water companies.
I think that, I'm just gonna, as a mayor, say this, we have worked with Liberty in the past, and we've come together when there were some really problems, and it takes time, but we seem to have worked. I know the city manager has met with Liberty this last week, so kind of knowing that we're on this path, so that we can communicate, but if we don't try.
Oh, no, I'm not saying don't try, Mayor. I don't even, I'm not even going there. I'm just thinking, we're gonna talk about the budget tonight, some of this stuff's gonna cost the city money, I think. I don't think it's all gonna be free to do, and I don't think our residents are gonna do it out of the goodness of their heart. So if we, if there's going to be a cost involved, and we want to be proactive, we need to be able to figure out how we're gonna fund it, and where we're gonna fund it, and when we're gonna fund it. So obviously, we have missed this budget session for 18, 19, and then we'll hopefully have figures to talk about in 19, 20. It's hard to say that. It's hard to think that. Next year, or the year after. But I think it's a wonderful program. I would really love to have your points, because I don't have all of the, I have the bullet points, but not the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 under everyone, and that's why I was so astounded when you kept going. So thanks, Mark, because we're very interesting.
I want to add to the, what she's sort of talking about, is that I think the, some of the basis of this is, if the customer wants to lower their cost of their bill, this is one way that, this is their price. This is not dollars, we're handing, you know, cash in their hand, but they're handing cash through their use of water. So I think that's where they're coming from in this, that they'll be looking what, and I'm, I'm gonna give it back to you, but I want to ask these questions. So, all right, I've had a number of, some of our visitors are here six months, are Canadians, and so we watch a couple of lawns and report the leaks and things, but they really don't understand what the equipment is under the ground. And so my question is, is, is there new technology in drip service? You know, do I have the drip plan in your yard? Is there new technology when you put water lines together so they don't break apart? And those are the things that, if citizens knew what kind of service to have and what type of product to sell, so more like the smart city does, you know, the latest and greatest, because it's lack of information. And, and alliances, and homeowners association, and other things are such good resources to.
They are.
To get that out. So, and then I'm gonna let Joanne talk, and that is foremost in my mind, because that's where we, and I know it isn't a great percentage that you say that they lose, but we know that we want them to water less now, okay, and be more effective in, in how they water their plants and yard. Go ahead.
No, you're right on. Technology has come a long way in the last few years. The technology to irrigate their sub-train watering systems, the smart controllers, most irrigation systems, you put them, they're on a timer, and they go on for a certain period of time, and really, nobody knows how much water you've used. So smart technology is to actually, on, show you even on your smartphone, that your timer, what your, your watering system went on for one hour, and you used 250 gallons. And you'll have that kind of information to empower your decision-making of whether your plants, how much, can decrease that down to a certain minimum amount of water your plants require. So the technology, you're absolutely correct, technology's come a long way. A lot of this is to look at technology, especially if we want to pilot the technology, because we don't, we don't have a lot of data in Goodyear, you're absolutely correct. We're actually very efficient, because we're so new. The plumbing codes are newer here, so we're very efficient, but we can still make improvements. And I think the technology is one of those smart, the automated meter infrastructure, yes, that is, that has some significant cost to retrofit the existing service area, and those, those preparations to look at those capital improvements will be forthcoming as part of that whole process in future budget analysis. But yes, technology is a big key factor, and empowering the consumer to do exactly what you said, Mayor, is, I can reduce my water bill, I can reduce the amount of water usage through a number of different ways. Either looking at your landscape, if you're allowed to change it, if you're not in a restricted HOA, or you still meet your HOA, but change your landscape design, change your watering techniques, change your, your, how you manage your water. No different than when, when the fuel got to $4 and people started driving more efficient cars. No different, we made different choices, and that's what will happen.
But we do have a handle that some other areas would not have. We are a city, and we have a committee, and we can have demonstrations. We can have, you know, save your water, whatever you want to call it, and for the entire city, to bring people in, to say, this is the latest and greatest, and so make them part of decision-making and what the cost is and all of that. So I think, you know, we're in a good position to, to help the water committee continue this, so. Joanne?
You know what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give you this, because I don't want to waste all of our time, but I, I really am very appreciative of everything that everyone's done. And Randy gave me this, this book, Where the Water Goes. Thank you, and I, I appreciate that. But really, kind of actually on to what Wally had mentioned, and, and I'm, I'm in agreement, because this is a great plan, and I agree in the, in the schedule. I, I like the, the goal of increasing the tree canopy of 10% a year, but we don't know what this means and what this will cost. And so I think that, as you look at this schedule, we really need that financial model that will help us with suggestions for the budget for CIP. Is it gonna be a CIP line item that is water conservation? I mean, these are items that, you know, this is great potentials here, and great ideas for our citizens, and, and, you know, when I think about, okay, black and white, old TV shows, you know, you used to see, the ladies would have their garden clubs and their rose contests. Well, you know what, we can have desert landscaping contests, that's the new thing, you know? And so it's just, you can make fun with it, but when you, when you really go out there and tell everyone that 60% of our water usage is outside, that's why this may seem like lots of fun, but it's critical. And, and I, and I'm very thankful, but, you know, we've got to figure out how we can put this in the budget and make it a priority, and, and it is a balance, and we know that. So thank you for all you guys have done. Appreciate it.
Well, I think if we're in a, I, I don't think that we're gonna take giant steps to begin with, and then I know that's what you're all thinking and saying, the budget, and I think people are realistic about budgets and what has to go into. So I don't want to magnify this, but what we're doing was finding a model that's gonna work, all right? And that's what you're at that point now, and doing all this investigation. And then we can take, okay, how many steps can we take that first year? So I don't think even on this budget, we could really say, okay, we're gonna go do that. I think some of it's already happened when we talked about landscaping. Do you remember our discussion about landscaping? We don't want all those bushes lining up on the streets anymore, you know, we want to do them in groups of three, want space in between them. We don't want to be spending all that money on water, but we also want a better look. So that, that's already a part of it. But I just want everybody to stand that's here, we, I know, Randy, you're back there, Randy Smith, Pete Tyke, Jennifer Barber, Jackson Mole, Marielle, Mario, you're there, Marlon Booth, Jack Gilmore, Laura Canino? I always do that wrong, you know that. And Susan Kagan, where are you all? Would you stand so we can applaud you? The time that you've taken, the hours away from home, and all your businesses and your work and all of that, but I see some smiles on your face, so I think you enjoyed working together, because you were some from different organizations and neighborhoods and all of that, and so now you know what the council goes through, trying to give everybody in every neighborhood what they want and how they want to do it. But I really think this, this is going to, as the time goes on, we're gonna see the light shine brighter and brighter and brighter on this. But as long as we have people like you, and the council has a goal, and that's what we need to do. To me, I think we need to set the first, we have one goal, we know the percentage of water, okay? We have, but we have to do things that are workable and definable, and that we can, at the end, go, yay, we did this much, and next time, we're gonna do this much, so. So, thank you. Is this the last time you're gonna come before us on something? You have a couple more times.
I, I may have one, June 11th, I think we're gonna have a little recognition for the Water Conservation Committee and some appreciation on the communication item. There may be one more with an agreement. There may be one more with an agreement, we'll see. Hopefully, then get that done in time, but definitely not my last.
All right. Well, that's just great. Mario, thanks for taking a chairmanship. I know how tough that can be and how time-consuming that. So again, thank you, everybody, for that. It's 10 minutes, we have a meeting at 6 o'clock, and we have to move up on the dice, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting.